Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council meeting. It is Monday, June 21st, 2021. We'll start the meeting with a roll call and determination of quorum.
Nordstrom. Weifenbach. Roberts. Strowman. Armstrong. Jones.
Here.
Lehman. Solomon. Evans. Drew. We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. And next we'll have our invocation by Pastor Randy Phipps, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you once again, Mayor and City Council. What a privilege it is for the opportunity we have to exercise our freedoms here in America, here in Rapid City. I choose to worship Jesus. Join with me as we praise Him and pray. Father, thank you for the privilege that we have to live this life that you've given us in this lovely place called Rapid City, South Dakota. What a joy it is to walk the streets and to drive the roads and to fellowship with other people in our city and our community, Lord God. Thank you for blessing this city. And I pray blessing over the City Council, as they have been entrusted with leadership and roles of discernment. May they have wisdom beyond anything that would be of their own value but would follow after principles of the Word of God, that they would do what would honor you, that they would find it would be easy work that they have before them, Lord God. Bless their families, bless their activities tonight, and bless this meeting in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance. United States of America. Father, from which it stands, one nation, under God, liberty and justice.
Thank you, everyone. And now it's time for the adoption of the agenda. The council may adopt the agenda as written or make certain alterations to it. Would there be a motion? Motion to approve the agenda by Pat Jones. Second, Jason Solomon. All in favor of approval of the agenda, say aye. All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, and tonight, under the awards and recognitions, I am going to read the executive proclamation regarding Juneteenth. We are a couple days late, but we did make this proclamation on the 19th. Whereas Juneteenth National Freedom Day commemorates the first day of the celebration of freedom in America for all Americans and the last known celebration for the ending of slavery, it continues to be the most recognized African-American holiday observance in the United States. And whereas June 19th, 1866, Juneteenth became the first of many anniversaries to be celebrated across America and around the world in commemoration of significant historical events on June 19th, 1862, 1863, and 1865, in which Congress abolished slavery in the federal territories. Meetings occurred to terrific musical and medicinal contributions to America and the world while serving in every one of America's wars and conflicts from the Revolutionary War forward, and while exemplifying courage, patriotism, and exhibiting patience with grace, did so in the face of and in spite of draconian laws and severe inequality. And whereas nearly 179,000 black men, 10% of the Union Army, served as soldiers in the U.S. Army, and another 19,000 served in the Navy, nearly 40,000 black soldiers died over the course of the American Civil War. Black women who could not formally join the Army also served as nurses, spies, and scouts to aid in the pursuit of their freedom. And whereas Americans of all colors, creeds, cultures, religions, and countries of origin share in common love of and respect for freedom, as well as a mutual determination to protect the right to freedom through democratic institutions established by the 13th, 14th, and 15th Amendments to the Constitution. These tenets of freedom were appropriated but not applied fairly to all Americans as a whole. However, the celebration of Juneteenth continued regardless. And whereas Juneteenth National Freedom Day, along with the Fourth of July Independence Day, completes the cycle of freedom for America's Independence Day observances, "none are free until all are free" is an often repeated maxim that highlights the significance of the end of the era of slavery in the United States. Now therefore, I, Steve Allender, Mayor of Rapid City, South Dakota, do hereby proclaim the day of June 19th as Juneteenth Day in Rapid City, and call upon all citizens of Rapid City to pay special observance to this day in honor of the ongoing and historic contributions by our African-American brothers and sisters have made in growing and strengthening our country and community. So this is a very timely and very noteworthy and special proclamation. I understand South Dakota was one of the last states in the Union to formally adopt Juneteenth as a state holiday. And we seem to still, we're trying to make this a little bit controversial as well. The social media posts, of course, ruin everything, but freedom should never be controversial. The ending of slavery should never be controversial. That's a historical event we can look back upon and count that as one thing that was done good back in those days. So anyway, thank you for listening, and we'll now continue with the meeting. Item two on the agenda is a presentation by Brose Engineering regarding bridge inspections. And we'll go to Public Works Director Dale Tech.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to introduce to you tonight Bruce Wilsey with Brose Engineering. You may recognize Bruce. He was here a year ago to give a very similar presentation as far as our bridge inspection program. It's a requirement of the state that the consultant selected for bridge inspection. Come and speak to you directly. So I'll turn that over to Bruce. There's a handout on your desk. He's going to be talking about three of our structures.
Thank you, Dale. As Dale mentioned, it is our requirement to come and share any information of our findings we may have with our bridge inspections. It's kind of my pleasure to tell you tonight that it's, I'll be very brief because your structures, while we did have a few illustrations, some things going on, the good news is the two of the three structures that are listed are in design phase and are either scheduled for replacement or for a major rehabilitation. So that being said, I'll go ahead and kind of briefly step through this. It was a down year as far as bridge inspections. We did inspect eight structures in City Rapid City. This was in late April. Obviously, we didn't encounter anything that we felt needed immediate attention, that we needed to contact Sarah Oden or Dale or anyone else. So with that being said, I'll go ahead and begin, and if you have any questions, feel free to interrupt me. I'm going to go ahead and begin with the first structure with the pictures, 375, 296. I believe I was here in November or maybe October talking about this very structure. It's on San Marco Boulevard. This is scheduled for replacement in a federal local grant program. I can't answer to where those plans are at, but it's my understanding that those plans are in place. I would note that this structure is deteriorating quite rapidly. We've been looking at it every year now for several years. It seems like every time we get under there, we find more things that concern us. So it's good to know that it's nearing completion as far as plans. Moving on to the next one is 424, 302. This is a structure on East Main. This structure also has some pretty rapidly occurring concrete deterioration. We've been concerned about what we're finding underneath the bed caps or the pier caps, if you will. That's our main concern, and we're certain that whatever the plans that are being developed for this particular structure will address the main concerns. Obviously, there's other issues, the deck, it's an older bridge, and it's got some issues, but they're hopefully going to be addressed with the rehabilitation plans. Any questions on those? The only other structure that we're going to note is the structure 430, 312. That is under Campbell Street. It's box covered. We did some rehabilitation work on that structure, I believe it was 2019 or maybe early last year, since our last inspection cycle, anyway. Minor issue there, we found that there could have been a little additional riprap placed at the outlet of the structure. That was what a lot of the rehabilitation work that was performed earlier was to address. It just looked like we could have had a little more riprap put into that, but Dale and Sarah have assured us that that's something that will be handled with regular maintenance by, Cruz, am I correct in that?
Correct.
So again, this is relatively minor issue. It's not causing any structural issues of any kind, but since we did the rehabilitation project recently, it's just something we felt could be cleaned up. So with that being said, thankfully, don't have any more to report unless any of you have any questions.
Okay, Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Wilsey, I appreciate the information bringing this forward, and I can't say enough about the attentiveness that you brought to these three different projects. And I also appreciate the other projects you brought forward for us to review from last year and giving us another update. So I can't say enough thank you for bringing this to our attention, and I'm glad some folks like you or profession are keeping an eye on our bridges because without our bridges, it's going to be very difficult and challenging for our community, making commerce work within this city. So I just wanted to say thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And it really is our pleasure to perform this service for the City Rapid City. It truly is. We enjoy it.
Well, I'm sure we've got this on the CIP list someplace as well, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for being here tonight. Item number three on the agenda is a presentation by Hope Center Director Melanie Tim. And Dan Seffner.
I'm not Melanie Tim. I am Dan Seffner, though, Rapid City, South Dakota, citizen of Rapid for 45 years. What I want to bring forward a little bit before Melanie comes to the microphone of Pastor Sean is that this didn't just start yesterday. Listen closely to listen to Melanie and Pastor Sean. We believe we have come up with something very doable and very workable for the Hope Center and its expanding needs. Now I'll introduce Melanie Tim and let her do the talking. She's the Chair of the Director of the Hope Center. Pastor Sean is pastor of Four Square Destiny Church.
Well, I want to thank you for your time and the opportunity to present some updated information about the Hope Center. We just celebrated our 10 years of being in existence, and when Pastor Doug Deal, who at the time was at First United Methodist Church, had the vision for the Hope Center, he did not ever imagine that we would grow to the point that we are now, which is what's leading me to be here tonight. A busy day 10 years ago was 20 people coming through the door. Today, I signed in 252 people, and they were not counted more than once. And then in the park, we served lunch to an additional approximately 100 people, most of which did not come to the Hope Center facility today. COVID-19, as we all are painfully aware, has created a lot of changes for all of us, and that is definitely true for the Hope Center. We tried desperately not to close during the pandemic, and we were successful in that, but that came at a price. That meant we had to be outside and very visible to the community. And homelessness is complicated, and it's ugly, and there's a whole lot more to it than folks realize. Addiction, mental health issues are a huge part to folks' struggles that lead to homelessness and poverty, and not everyone that we serve is homeless and living outdoors, but many are. And so when we were outside, we took on the responsibility of feeding people, and that normally has not been a service of the Hope Center. We've allowed other agencies to do their thing, and we do our thing, which is primarily a mail service and hygiene products and support services to help people receive housing and employment. But that became a very obvious and necessary requirement for someone to step up and provide meals, and so we chose to do that. And we're continuing to do that in the park three days a week because there continues to be a need for folks. And so we're trying to adhere to CDC guidelines and try to keep everyone safe as COVID continues to be somewhat of a concern for us. We are limiting the number of folks that can be in the Hope Center at any given time. We try to limit to 10 to 12 individuals that are guests coming in for services. And if you've driven down Kansas City Street, you've probably seen lots of folks standing outside of our building or hanging out on the sidewalk or across the street, and that would be why. They are waiting their turn to come in. We are no longer, because we have grown so much, we are no longer able to have our day center like we are used to having it. And so we have had to convert our building, which we estimate is about 3,000 square foot, into just functioning. It's, as Dan said, if you've not had the opportunity to come to the Hope Center, I would welcome you to come anytime. I would be happy to show you around so you could see firsthand what our daily struggles are. Before you is a packet that's been put together with a letter. Getting straight to the point, we would like a new facility. We're not asking for anything that is elaborate by any means. A building has been identified on East Philadelphia Street, which is owned by Destiny Four Square Church. They have so graciously decided they would like to partner with us, and we're a tough crowd, so I'm very pleased about that. This building is just under 11,000 square foot, and it needs a lot of renovation, as right now it is basically an empty warehouse-type building. And so our presentation tonight is in regards to helping offset the cost for renovating that space to be a new home for our guests and the Hope Center. So we are asking for $250,000. We believe it's going to cost at least $500,000 to do the renovation, and so it is our hope that we can come up with the remaining funds through private fundraising efforts. We're off to a good start. If any of you happen to be in Wilson Park this weekend, we had a successful bake sale. We're going old school with trying to get the word out there that our intention is to enhance our services to our guests and continue to do what we do and do it better. And so the next document is from our Board of Directors, listing out the address on Philadelphia Street, and just that our Board of Directors is in support of this potential project. Destiny Four Square Church has also included a letter stating they would be willing to partner with us. And then this is an overview of what we're looking at. Our 3,000 square foot in no way can accommodate 300 people a day. Right now, folks are not able to come in and spend a considerable amount of time indoors, and this is leading our guests to be cranky and frustrated, and honestly, us to be cranky and frustrated. We would like to be able to go back to them coming in out of the elements, having a safe place to be, not feeling rushed when they come in to take care of their daily business. And so these are some services that we offer, 200 guests a day. Our mail center, we estimate that we've provided over 4,000 individuals in Rapid City with a safe and secure address for them to receive and send their mail. Mentorship. Mentorship is something that we take very serious at the Hope Center. Building relationships with our guests is what sets us apart from everyone else. Walking over here tonight, I heard a huge yell down the street, and I was with these three gentlemen, and I, without turning around, I identified who that was, and then I heard my name. And so we are on a first-name basis with our guests. We know their struggles. We support them, we encourage them, and we provide as many opportunities as we can for them to move forward and to tackle some of those difficult issues that are keeping them stuck where they are. And granted, there are some individuals who make the choice not to move forward, and we have decided at the Hope Center that we are going to love them where they are, and we are going to have an abundance of grace. So I would like to invite Pastor Sean from Destiny Four Square Church to come up, and then if anyone has any questions, we'd be happy to answer those for you if we have time.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much. I just want to give my passionate support. My name is Pastor Sean Shop from Destiny Four Square Church. Our board and our team is excited about the mission of Hope Center and the impact and just the hand-to-hand type of outreach that happens through this ministry. And, you know, we're in a neighborhood where a lot of their clients already are with the weekly rate hotels, and so we see that traffic already. We think it would be, you know, a great neighborhood to move Hope Center to, and we would just, we'd feel like this is an open-door opportunity and would love to see this happen. So all thumbs are up from us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have a comment from Jason Solomon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could I have the police chief come up and just share about why he and the department are in support of this, if you don't mind, Chief? And thank you for the presentation, both of you. Melanie, before he gets to that, can you describe, first of all, obviously, I appreciate what you all are doing. I think this is worthwhile and should be considered by the council, contingent on the fact that you secure the private funds. Can you talk to me a little bit about the collaborative efforts you have with other organizations serving our homeless community, such as the Cornerstone, One Heart, et cetera?
So when we, part of what we do is help our guests identify some of the things that are keeping them from moving forward. And so through building those relationships and those things are identified, absolutely we put forth as much effort as we most possibly can to encourage them to seek out maybe mental health services through BMS, or One Heart has been amazing for several of our guests who are residing there now. The mobile medic, we work with daily. Within the first hour of the Hope Center being open this morning, we had two guests that came in needing medical assistance. And we work very closely with them to be proactive, to keep folks from having those ambulance rides and those kinds of situations that lead to more intensive involvement from the medical professionals. Many of our guests see us as a place of refuge, and so they come to us first, and then we're able to connect them with the quality-of-life unit with the police department or wherever that may be. Shelter is tough in Rapid City, and so we definitely refer our guests to Cornerstones, but there's more people than there are beds, unfortunately. And that is, that's just the situation that we have right now in our community. And, you know, we are going to do everything within our power to encourage and support people, to take advantage of the resources that are available to them and to utilize them to their fullest, and we're going to cheerlead them on when they do that.
Okay. And obviously, the care campus plays a huge part, I imagine, in the care. That's my encouragement, in particular if you seek funds from the city. One of the things I think we really need is for all the organizations not to work in silos, but instead work together and not reinvent the wheel. The Hope Center is unique in the services that you offer. I know that. Most of my council members know my wife used to work there, doesn't work there, hasn't worked there for a few years now, but, so I'm very familiar with the services and appreciate the work that's done. I can tell you, I do think we could do better, not just the Hope Center. I'm talking the entire community working together to help folks out of homeless, and I know that there's a lot of complexities involved, but I do appreciate what you're doing. I think this particular project, again, is worthwhile. And if you don't mind, if I could have the police chief come up, I saw you were on the list of supporters, Chief, and I thought I'd just give you an opportunity to share about why you signed off on this.
Well, I would just say we've had a pretty strong relationship with the Hope Center for many years now, to include having people in our building actually serve on the board. And for us, you know, as law enforcement, we have been the 24/7 caretakers of the vulnerable in our community, and we've had to partner with folks like the Hope Center, just because this issue is so much bigger than us alone. And we've appreciated that partnership and the support, and I think that anything that we can do to further throw support to entities like the Hope Center that are trying to serve the folks that are there, they're here in our community right now. And like I said, a lot of times, law enforcement gets tasked with trying to help them out of a very challenging situation, and we are in support of any entity that is doing what they can to bring folks to a different place in life.
Thank you. Thank you all. Pat Jones.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Melanie, it warmed my heart so much to hear you say grace. Grace is the invisible love that our country, our town, everywhere is in need of more now than ever. And to hear you say that we will be loving them where they are and with an abundance of grace couldn't be more timely and more important than right now. So thank you. Thank you for what you've already done, and thank you for what you're going to do. May the cup of grace overfloweth into what you're doing. Thank you. Pastor Sean, a question, if I may, Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. So will you still be able to operate and do your services and that kind of thing with this taking place?
Yes. Yeah, no problem at all. We, our main services are Sundays and Wednesday evenings, which don't match with the hours of, the operating hours of Hope Center.
Thank you for coming forward, seeing the need, and matching it and helping with it.
Yep. My pleasure.
Darla Drew.
Thank you. Melanie, I have a question for you. So when you go into your private fundraising approach, are you finding that churches and the faith community are helping you guys with this effort at all? the faith community are helping you guys with this effort at all?
Yes, we do receive monthly support from several churches in town. We have not, we have not launched a capital campaign. That is our next step. We kind of want to see what kind of support we're able to receive from the city before we move forward with a capital campaign. We have been in meetings with Alan Solano from the Vicarage Foundation, and so we've been having some conversations with him as well. So, I mean, the, we're, we're planting a lot of seeds, but we're taking it very slow, and we're trying to be very wise in our approach.
I see two hundred and fifty thousand as being very, very doable, especially for all the services you guys provide. Something that has kind of, I don't know, concerned me is that a lot of churches send people to, overseas, to help with communities. And I, I get that, that's a beautiful thing. But we could help, use some help right here. We, we need help from people that are in their congregations that, you don't have to go to Guyana or wherever it is. We need your help right here in Rapid City to rebuild some of these communities and for our homeless. And I, I just ask you that sometime before you look to send people far away, you look ninety miles away to the Pine Ridge Reservation, or that you look as close as these folks that are working so hard, so that you don't have to deal with this. You don't have to deal with the homeless so much, because these guys step forward. And I give you all the admiration in the world because this is tough work. So thank you very much, and I hope that the churches really step up for you guys. Thank you.
Bill Evans.
Thank you, Darla. I think that was a poignant observation you just made right there about local support. And I definitely support this concept. My one concern, and I hope I'm completely, totally wrong about this, is the distance. Right now, I think between our three major facilities that provide services like this, it's a maximum of three blocks between one to the other. Now, that doesn't make much of a difference in the summer, in the spring and the fall. But for about three or four months, when the wind is blowing sixty miles an hour and it's thirty-five below, eleven blocks out there is a long ways. And I have walked that route, and I suggest everybody else do it, and if you think that's an easy hike, I suggest you walk it again. I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about the distance of this third facility, and it might create a new problem that you haven't had before, simply because people won't be able to get there, and we may find more people stranded out in the middle of nowhere and, I don't know, frankly, being frozen and stuff. So that is my concern. But it does look like you guys could provide a beautiful facility there, so I hope it works. Thank you.
Okay, that's all the comments from the City Council. Thank you for being here tonight. Item four on the agenda, presentation by Malcolm Chapman and Karen Mortimer, it's update on the Human Relations Commission and the MOA.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Malcolm Chapman, the coordinator for the Human Relations Commission and the Minna Lusahano Kolo Kichiapi ambassadors. On behalf of all of the MOAs that are out there, the Human Relations Commission, where this work is housed in the City Attorney's Office, we just appreciate the opportunity to come before you and share some information with you about what we've been up to over the last few months. As you well know, when you signed an MOU last year, this created this public-private partnership between the HRC and the MOA. And tonight's presentation, we have some goals that we'd like to accomplish, just to have you have a general understanding of the structure and the operations of the new reimagined HRC MOA partnership. We'd like for you to be able to describe how the public and private partnership is designed and how it's been initiated, and then we'd like for you to be able to identify what actions have been initiated and what's possible in the future. The Human Relations Commission, let's talk about the people involved, first of all, from the commission's standpoint. We have nine commissioners, three with three-year terms, two with, three with two-year terms, and then three with one-year term. Our three-year-term participants are Denise Maher, Karen Mortimer, and Whitney Rencounter. Our two-year terms are Commissioner, Commissioner Lloyd La Croix, Paula Longfox, and then Father Cody Manis. And then our one-year terms are Lindsey Huffman, Bill May, and Amy Sazou. At our last meeting, the commission elected an executive board, which consists of the Chair, which was Karen Mortimer, elected, Vice Chair Lloyd La Croix, Treasurer Bill May, and Administrative Officer of Denise Maher. They also formed some standing committees. They formed a committee that's looking at funding and financing. We looked at, for lack of a better term, a complaint committee, which is really the HRC bucket of that, that I'll talk about a little bit later, an outreach or events committee, and then an ad hoc committee that we, right now, are leaning into the strategic plan and governance and planning of the Human Relations Committee, Commission, HO, MOA. All of this is designed to bridge cultures in Rapid City because we understand fully that not only does place, but relationships matter as well. And that's the essence of this work, building relationships, one person, one entity at a time. And that's the work that we're doing at MOA and HRC. I'm going to talk about the public part of the partnership, and then Karen Mortimer will talk about the private portion of the, of the partnership. So the public portion of this partnership has really leaned into drafting a strategic plan. We're looking at that from two aspects. One, an internal-facing aspect, which is about building the organization and designing a mission, vision, values, fundraising, and communicating that vision through a communication plan. And then outward-facing, external goals of really to beam, which is our mission, which is to bridge cultures, to educate ourselves and others, to advocate for change, and then to model respectful behavior. So far, as I said, that mission is beam. Our vision, we're dancing around the words of culturally aware, of being safe, of being an inclusive community, and being a community that celebrates our differences. And a part of that is, is to fundraise so that we can do the public events on the private side, on the MOA side. And then how we, do we communicate that vision? In communicating that vision, we're looking at a lot of different avenues to be able to do that. One, which will be embedded in the strategic plan, which is a communication plan, which will look at social media, which will look at traditional media, probably podcasts, YouTube, and a whole host of things to be able to convey the message to the community as a whole. Just going to talk about how the HRC MOA is talking about manifesting this work in our community, really through these three buckets that we talk about quite a bit. The first bucket is a reactive bucket. That's, a discrimination complaint has to take place, and as that complaint then comes forward, that complaint would come to my office, and then we would do an intake, an interview, and then the City Attorney's Office would make sure that that's a verified complaint, and then we would walk through that process of addressing that complaint. That's a reactive. That's really a discriminatory action and, and waiting for something to happen. The second bucket is the MOA bucket, which is the fun bucket in the community. That's a proactive bucket. That's the events that MOA has been doing for the last six and a half, seven years in our community, of going out to the community, creating safe spaces, creating places where events could take place, where people could come together respectfully, civilly, authentically, to share and celebrate our differences. That's the fun bucket. I think the hope is that if we can do enough of the MOA bucket, that we would really drive down the need for complaints, even though there's still an education portion, that we need to step into, to make sure that people who are aware when discrimination events happen, that there is an action that they can take to do something about that. And then the third bucket is a community networking approach. That's not only for those of us who are doing this work, but I think it's for the rest of the community as well. What's transformative, I think, or could be transformative about this work and this approach, is that this is saying that this work will not happen at a big scale in our community, change our community, without the help of the community. This isn't MOA's work, and HRC's work, or the City Council's work. This is our community's work. And we're looking for partners that will help do this work and advance this work in our community. So we'll create opportunities for people to come together to network, to then be able to come together to address some of the needs in our community as it relates to race and looking at difference. In a nutshell, we think that those three buckets will then add up to this HRC MOA partnership, public-private partnership, that can transform our community. Some of the key activities that I've been tasked with is to support local entities, and I'll just run off a list of, since I've been hired, I've done about twenty-five, twenty-six presentations in the communities to youth-serving organizations, to service organizations, to churches, to businesses in the community, the Youth City Council, and other entities in our community. One of the biggest ones that I've done is with the School of Mines. The School of Mines last fall had a few athletes that kneeled during the National Anthem that created quite a stir with the School of Mines and their alumni. I was asked to come in to participate in conversations and listening sessions with alumni, with students, with athletes, with faculty, and we did over four nights' worth of those listening sessions with over a hundred people involved in those activities with the School of Mines. We are continuing to do that kind of work and look for opportunities to educate the community. I'm also tasked with fundraising and friend-raising. Karen will have some exciting news about fundraising and some of the events that we're doing, so I'll leave that with her. Another portion of what I'm tasked with is around how do we educate the community and look for opportunities to educate the community? We just did our first joint event last Thursday, which was really successful, and Karen will talk about that a little bit under the MOA as well. But I think that that's the important part of this work, one of the important parts of this work, that we each somehow take it upon us to educate ourselves and others about the importance of this work. I just think that we need to lean into that, that acronym of BEAM, of bridging cultures, educating ourselves and others, advocacy, and then modeling this behavior. The other thing that the HRC has tasked me with is keeping an administrative record of all of the conversations that come to our office, that any conversation about people who might have a discriminatory complaint, or even to think that it might be, we keep track of all of those and are tracking those so far. The last thing that I'll talk about before I turn it over to Karen is really just the role of the coordinator as it was designed by the task force that looked into this work and create, helped create this partnership. To establish and maintain contacts in the community, so we have a robust contact list that's growing every day. To complete and implement a detailed strategic plan, we have started that process and now have goals. We are still filling out and breathing life into the strategies and the action steps that will accompany those. Organize and host community events. MOA has done that for the last six years. We will do that and make it more robust, and we started that process last Thursday. To engage the community and tribal leaders, I'm out all the time talking with folks in the community, and I just will applaud Mayor Allender for reaching out and having conversations with my dear friend Kevin Killer, who's the president of the tribe down at Pine Ridge. And I'm tasked with acting, or to act as a convener and collaborator of diverse groups in our community to help build relationships. I think the one that I keep coming back to right now is the School of Mines. That issue was seeming to, was going to blow up in a big way in our community, and as a result, to just create the space where civil, respectful conversation can happen. And the school is starting to do that and continuing to do that work as well. To act as a mediator when race issues occur, and then, lastly, to fundraise. The two things that I'll say before I turn it over to Karen, one is that this work is painstakingly slow. I was at a, a training just a couple of weeks ago, where the Vicarage Foundation and United Way of the Black Hills are trying this Communities That Care model and bringing it to our community, and they put up a slide talking about when they were going to do their first event. It will be about a year after this group is formed that they will do their first event. This is slow work. I think that we are ahead of the curve in large part because MOA and all of the foundational work that they've done in this community over the last few years. And then the last thing I'll say is that this, again, is not just my work, the city's work, Karen's work, HRC's work, MOA's work. This work, if it's going to transform our community, has to be embraced by each and every one of us in this community. I think we all have a responsibility to help create places where civil, respectful conversations and actions can take place. And with that, I'll turn it over to Karen, and I'll stand for any questions once she finishes as well.
Mayor Allender and Council and all City officials, it's a pleasure to, to be here tonight to talk a little bit about what we've been doing over the last few months. And I think you'll find it interesting, and I can tell you that we are really excited and so grateful that this partnership happened. The timing seemed to be good, seems to be good, and it is good. So thanks for inviting us to share a little bit tonight. So I'm going to talk about the private part of this, this private-public partnership. And, you know, it's not, it's, it's always a little clumsy at the beginning to try to figure this out, and so bear with us as we're doing it, but I think we've got a great, great start. So as Malcolm, Malcolm shared, that we have been, the partnership is with the Minna Lusahano Kolo Kichiapi ambassadors. And that means Rapid City Circle of Friends in Lakota. So we've been doing our work for about six or seven years. We've been working with leaders in our community, both native and non-native, and found some really interesting things, and as Malcolm said, relation, we've found that relationships really mattered. And a lot of the, the, sort of, some of the core work of MOA is being infused into this work, and it's by no means exclusive of, of anything else. This is just a great start. It's a great jumpstart, as you'll see, as we talk about some of the projects that we're going to be doing. So BEAM, Malcolm mentioned BEAM several times, and BEAM came from MOA. Actually, Marnie Herman coined this phrase, and we think, we, we've always thought it was brilliant, and I think it's, it's more brilliant than ever. It's, it's forming our mission in the HRC, and we're excited about that. So our partnership responsibilities, there's kind of three chunks. One is, and we signed this MOU with you, and we are fully rolling up our sleeves and intending to complete each piece of this. So as the private entity, we are going to work on investment from the community by asking for funds, by working, working with donors, working with grants, and we'll give a little report in just a minute on that. We also bring our body of work and our relationships to, to the city, to this, to this organization and to this mission. And we're really excited about the, the MOA group is fully behind this and, and excited about it. We had a meeting just recently, and the group's stayed together for so many years and, and is expanding and growing, and that's exactly what we need to have happen. The third one is that we're going to help guide and lead the proactive bucket, but we also want to expand that. We, we're excited to do that with other groups in the community. By, by no means is this meant to be exclusive. So fundraising. Our results, by today, June twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one, in the last couple of months, we've raised eighty thousand dollars. And we think that's pretty awesome. And we think that's pretty awesome. And this is from just a few donors. We decided to go out to find some investment from organizations, businesses in the community, and I think this is just the start. The thing that I think I want you to know is that as Malcolm and I have gone out and had these conversations, we would go for a meeting for an hour to talk about this work, and we'd typically walk out an hour and a half, two hours, two and a half hours later. People are leaning into this. There's a belief that we need to do this work. So our first founding partners, and we're going to gather a few more by the end of the summer, we want to thank them publicly. Black Hills Community Bank was the very first investor, and they have invested for five years. Black Hills Surgical Hospital, also a significant contribution, they're committed for three years, and they've already expressed interest in growing their investment. Dakota Charitable Foundation, a very significant contribution to this as well. Elevate is in the game, and we're having some really excellent conversations about some business partnerships with them. Skulk Construction has committed a five-year commitment. And the last one is a grant that I wrote back in January, and we were just so delighted to have it come in in June. And this is from the South Dakota Community Foundation, and this, I'll talk about this grant a little bit later, as we look forward to, these will be more, they're really not restricted funds, because the grant was written with the whole idea of building community. So events to celebrate, as Malcolm talked about, this, our very first MOA gathering in person, we've had some Zoom calls and Zoom meetings, but our very first gathering and networking session in person was June 10th at One Heart. Charity's been involved with us from the beginning, and we had a great group come to One Heart and have coffee at the Home Brew and their new coffee shop. If you haven't been there, I highly encourage you to go, it's an awesome place. And just people connecting with each other, being glad to see each other, talking about the future, and then Charity gave people a great tour. And then, last Thursday, on June 17th, as Malcolm mentioned, we had our very first public forum. And the title, sort of the theme of this one, and we're going to make this a series, by the way, "The More You Know, the Better We Do." So the more you, as a community, know, the better we, as a community, do. And so this one was, was an amazing forum. I think you'll notice some of the, some of the people on the panel that you'll recognize. The idea was to bring community entities, not all community entities, certainly this, but a selection. We had seven different entities being represented who deal with the most vulnerable in our community, some of which who don't always necessarily work together, but we were just blown away by the collaboration and the conversation that even in the planning of this forum that happened between each and every one of the people on stage. And they were, with the Fire Department, Chief Colbertson and Jim Bussell, with the Care Campus, Willie Welshel, with Camp Minna Lusahana, Sunny Redbear, with Health and Human Services, Barry Tice, with the Creek Patrol, Caitlin Sholder, our Chief of Police, Don Hedrick, and finally, Geraldine Church, the president and CEO of Oyate Health. It was an amazing evening, and we had, you know, Laura and I were talking about, I think, maybe 80, 90 people on a warm summer night. We were excited. And people were, people stayed afterwards, talked to each other. It was, it exceeded our expectations, for sure. It was an opportunity for people to hear and seek collaboration, to learn from these remarkable organizations who are serving our community, and then for people to gather and connect with one another. So what's next? Well, we are going to, as a commission, we have agreed to continue to do the champion work that MOA has started with. And a lot of this happens in the fall, and I know many of you have come, and I hope you'll come to all of these events if you can, or at least some. With the Black Hills Waachiapi, the Powaw, we kind of, we do a Waachiapi 101, we have a community breakfast or lunch. We're working right now with Visit Rapid City and the Powaw Board on that, and there'll be, for sure, a community reception at Prairie Edge. The Native American Day Parade, we will come back this year, we're excited about that, and we'll help sponsor parts, we've always sponsored the prizes for the parade, and then helped with manpower. With the Rapid City Boarding School History Project, we will, once again, sponsor the Memorial Walk on Native American Day. And then the LNI, just an amazing, robust engagement with the community. We have signs downtown to welcome people, the red carpet welcome. We'll get all these dates out to you, the hand games challenge, I know many of you've participated in that in the past. And again, we'll have a community reception generously at Prairie Edge. So we're going to continue our work. What works? Well, we're going to continue the champion work. We're going to try to grow the circle. Malcolm and I talk often about, sometimes we speak to the choir, well, now we want to get beyond the choir to the congregation, and then open the doors and bring in everyone else. So we've got a lot of work to do, but we want to grow this circle. We want to develop some new learning opportunities for the community, new opportunities for people to learn and to engage with one another. And we want to spread the message, create a culture of BEAM. So finally, this is my last slide, these are ideas that we're exploring. We are so interested in the youth partnerships and the Youth City Council, so we're in conversation with them. We're going to be talking to and supporting the Rapid City Schools, and particularly the Indigenous Student Task Force and the needs of our native students. There's a new magnet school that's, magnet school, charter, not a charter school, magnet school, a new kind of model school that's going to be starting in the fall, so that'll be interesting to see how that goes. We are interested and in conversation about workforce cultural proficiency, partnering with businesses, creating something for businesses and the community to help with diversity in the workplace. Community messaging, website media, that's really necessary, and we will be working on that. We'll develop more forums, such as the one we had last Thursday, "The More You Know, the Better We Do." And we're already talking about one for August. The "cultural" quote-unquote "tour" of Rapid City is part of the South Dakota Community Foundation grant. What this grant is focused on will be creating critical conversations, helping people understand what and where and why things happen in our community. So we're going to put on our creative co-creation hats, and we have funds to do this, so we'll be working on that straight away. We're also looking at, as Malcolm talked about, the complaint process. We're looking at some kind of work where we could do some mediation, where we bring people together in a more of an informal way to have all voices heard. We have a lot of work to do in this area, and so as a commission and with Malcolm's support and leadership, we're going to be able to hopefully help the community learn more about itself. And finally, the National Humanities Alliance, and I'm not sure if you're aware of this, but the National Humanities Alliance is, has chosen three cities in the United States to study, to do case studies in terms of the humanities. And the cities are Charleston, Nogales, Arizona, and Rapid City, South Dakota. And so they're talking to several, to people in our community, and they reached out to MOA and are interested in partnering with us, particularly in relationship to an evaluation process, to try to capture data so that we can tell our stories even better. So that's to come, that we just started that conversation with them, but wanted you to know about that. So questions? Malcolm? Malcolm and I are ready to answer or talk with you about whatever you'd like.
Okay, we'll go to Ritchie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll try to keep this brief here, but I appreciate the mayor presenting this challenge to this network, to come up with a program for the city of Rapid City and the community, to do something or address the issues that are within the city of Rapid City, that are kind of pushed down underneath the undercurrent that we normally don't see and hear about. So I appreciate you folks putting together such a program. And I also hope and desire that your bucket list that you have over there, the three different buckets, hopefully they'll be remaining shallow, meaning that, what I mean by that is that the list is very long, but as you work through it, it creates a more shallow bucket. So I wish you well in that regard. And then I also want to applaud and congratulate Malcolm and being the coordinator of this program. We've got a very articulate person in charge of this right now, and I appreciate everything that you've done and watched you in your career on the city council, and then afterwards with your private practice and how you did some of the conversations that you've held within the community. And now you're taking over on this position, and I know you, as an active listener, will be able to accommodate the community and the community needs that normal, we don't normally hear about it. So I applaud you for doing all the proactive work on it. Best wishes, good luck, and look forward to the next get-together with the MOA and HRC. Thank you.
I want to acknowledge the picture from the June 17th, it was Ritchie Nordstrom's picture. It was a great one.
I got lucky, it was very nice. Photography is a hobby of mine, too.
Okay, Laura Armstrong.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Thank you, Ms. Mortimer. Lovely presentation. Back in 2017, I was assigned to the Human Relations Commission, and at that time, we had a lovely group of people, but we just met for a couple hours each month. And I commend Mayor Allender, from one of our one-on-one meetings, a couple months into that, I'm like, what do they do? And it was a good group of people, but they just seemed to have no direction. And Mayor Allender had the foresight to put the HRC task force together, and they did the hard work, they did the messy work. And there were people from different backgrounds, ethnicities, even different political affiliations. And I think the mayor was a little nervous putting them all together in one room to do that. But through that hard work, they had a unanimous decision to present this to us, knowing that there was value in this work, and it was important work. And in fact, it goes with our municipal core values of vibrant, livable community. We need that culture. Healthy, safe, and skilled, economic stability and growth, the LNI, the Powaw, outstanding recreational and cultural opportunities, that's a no-brainer, and us, responsive, accessible, and effective governess. We need to understand the cultural work in order for us to do our jobs effectively. And I know that MOA has been working very hard over the last six, seven years, maybe even going on eight. But Malcolm Chapman, you've only been with the city now since January.
January 4th.
January 4th, right. And the fact that the two of you together raised $80,000 in that time period is amazing, amazing work. And I know that there will be more to come, because there is value in this work. And thank you, Mr. Nordstrom, for that picture. It was a powerful one. It's, it's good stuff. So thank you very much for your work, I yield.
Okay, thank you both for being here and for the presentation.
Thank you, City Council, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much.
Okay, now we will go to Councilmember Pat Jones for a moment of personal privilege.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Just a couple of things I'm really excited to announce. One of the committees that I serve on is the Mayor's Council for People with Disabilities, and they have recently completed a major task that they've been working on for some time, and that is a PSA that you will be seeing on the local TV stations about encouraging people to not use handicap spaces incorrectly, but also specifically to not park in a handicap spot if you're not in a van. Because when you see handicap spots with the lines beside them, that is to provide room for someone in a wheelchair to be able to get in and out of their van. And that tends to be a bit of a problem throughout town as well. So with the help of some local media, a really, really good PSA was filmed, and it's airing right now, or if not right now, it'll be airing very soon. So I encourage people to watch for that, because it's very exciting that we're getting, that that is now done, and we'll be moving forward. Next, I would like to thank Park's Director, Jeff Beegler, for his help. The other day, I met with some residents in Robinsdale Park that had some questions about some things, and I sent him a lengthy list of questions, and thank you so much for responding so quickly with fantastic information. And one really great idea surfaced from that, and it's a mosquito control device called a bat box. And if you don't know what a bat box is, it's a box that a bat lives in, and bats are one of the best things in the world for mosquito control. You know, no spray, no chemicals, no nothing, just bats eating bugs, and it's a beautiful thing. So, and Robinsdale Park is prime for some bat boxes. So Jeff, if you don't mind, I'm going to put out a request that if any, like Boy Scout project, or service club, or something like that, if they're looking for a project to do, you know, holy mosquito bites, Batman, do we have a gig for them? Robinsdale Park needs bat boxes, and if you're interested, you can contact Park's Director, Mr. Beegler, at his office, or my information's available on the city website, contact me, and we will get you going in the right direction. So that would be a very fun and exciting project to put in over at Robinsdale Park. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is general public comment. There are no speaker requests for general public comment, there are a few for an item just a little bit down the agenda, so I'll be calling on you then. And then, moving on, non-public hearing items, 5 through 44, in fact, it's right now. I will open public comment on items 5, well, 5 through 32. And there are no speaker requests for 5 through 32, so we'll go to consent, 5 through 32. Those who need to pull items off the consent calendar, Darla Drew.
I'd like to pull item 25, please.
Item 25, Pat Jones.
Item 19, please, Mayor. Thank you.
Lance Lehman.
Item 8 and 18, Mayor.
Okay, and Ritchie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor, item 16.
Okay, seeing that there are no further requests, I would ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of 8, 18, 16, 19, and 25. Motion by Armstrong and a second by Strowman. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll go to item 8. Authorize Mayor and Finance Director to sign an infill agreement between the city of Rapid City and Lazy P6 Land Company for the construction of public improvements and acceptance of H lots. Lance Lehman.
Thank you, Mayor. Per the applicant, I'd like to make a
Per the applicant, I'd like to make a motion to move this item to the next meeting.
Okay, that would be a motion to move it to the July 6th council meeting? Is that correct?
Correct.
And a second by Pat Jones. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item 16. Approve Resolution 2021-059, a step increase and COLA adjustment for non-union employees. This was continued from the June 7th meeting, and we'll go to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. First, make a motion to approve this resolution.
Okay, second by Jason Solomon.
And retain the floor.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I've been remiss about thanking all the non-union employees for all the efforts and works, and now patience for us to be able to come up with this resolution. And then I also want to acknowledge the work that Nick Strout put into the HR Director for putting in all of the time and effort to get me to a comfortable stage of where I can be satisfied with this resolution and look forward to the next report in the fall sometime during the third quarter of this year. So again, thanks to all the non-union employees that we have within the city that have been patient with us, and I can't say enough about all the hard work you folks do every day. And with that, Mayor, thank you. I yield.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second for approval on the floor. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 18. Resolution number 2021-061, Resolving Leveing Assessment for Abatement of Nuisances. Lance Lehman.
Thank you, Mayor. I think Paulie Assumption would like to make an amendment to this before we approve it.
Okay, Paulie Assumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The item number one on this resolution for Gordon Howey, that land has been sold to another property owner, so we have to start the process all over again. So I need to get him removed from this resolution, please.
Okay, we have a motion by Lance Lehman to approve item 18 with that amendment, and a second by Darla Drew. Bill looked like he had a question, so I was just waiting.
Yeah, I do have a question, if that's cool. So was the nuisance during the period that Howey owned the property, and it's been sold since, or what? That's the little clarification I need.
So I believe it was sold during process of this process. It had already been cleaned up, and then it's been sold since that time. And we still have to notify the new owner and give them an opportunity to pay that assessment because it goes with the land, not the property owner, much like any other assessment to the property.
Oh, I guess I didn't know that. I find it peculiar. It's kind of like these coaches that violate the recruiting rules, and then the next, the school's punished, and they go on their merry way. That's just a bizarre process to me, but I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
I would agree, but unfortunately, we've been caught on the other side where we haven't started over, and then they come in and say that they've sold the property, and that's a whole nother conversation.
Okay, Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I don't understand. If we're going to start over, what are we approving? I mean, there's nothing to approve?
Not on that one specifically, but there are other properties on that resolution.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay, we have motion and a second on the floor to approve this item as amended. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 19. Approve Change Order Number Two, final, for Fitzgerald Stadium renovations. And that was, Pat Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move approval of this item, and if we get a second, keep the floor, please.
Second by Solomon. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. We love the new Fitzgerald Stadium. It's understatement, it's absolutely beautiful facility. There's just one thing still missing, and that's the umpire room. And I'm going to keep encouraging them. Promises were made to have an umpire room, and that needs to take place at that facility yet, so I encourage the people behind the stadium and that are still involved in it to please make sure and carry through and live up to that commitment of the umpire room. The umpires play a tremendous role in having games and tournaments, and they need a safe and convenient and comfortable place to change and to be during tournaments. So I just want to encourage them to continue to make that happen. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of item 19. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. On to item 25. Authorize Staff to Advertise For Bids, Anamosa Street Water Main. Estimated Cost $940,000. Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. Like many of us on this council, when I see something like that costs nearly a million dollars, I do have questions. And I know this has been before as before, but I guess, ah, Dale, when I was reading through this, to advertise for bids for Anamosa Street, I saw that we actually voted on it first time September 16th, 2019. Was this delayed because of COVID? Was there another reason?
No, the delay, if you will, was an agreement that was signed between the City of Rapid City and a developer. Certainly, the developer, it's a very complicated story as to why we're building another water main. It has to do with two different pressure zones in the area. One pressure zone was converted to the other to be able to get water immediately. And this particular water main, then, is to return that other pressure zone to service that isn't needed at this point in time, or wasn't needed at that point in time, but will soon be needed. So the agreement was signed with the developer stating that they needed to supply the City of Rapid City with a set of construction plans so the city could bid that project. So it's been a joint effort between the city and the developer to get this project moving along on both the city and the developer's timetable.
So does that cost for both water mains that we did? Is that for both projects?
This is a significant water transmission main. It's not just a standard water main that you would see out in the front of your residential home. It's a, I forget the diameter, I think it might be a 16-inch diameter water main. So it's a significant water main that will supply water to quite a large area.
But this isn't something we usually see, a two-year delay, you know, in a project. So I just wanted to get some clarity on that.
Yeah, actually, that's a two-year from a design to a construction, that's fairly common, actually.
When, from the time we sign it?
From the time we start the process of designing a project, yes.
Okay. It just seemed a little long to me, and all I could figure out was COVID, so, okay, thank you for your explanation. I yield.
Remember if we had a motion on this one. Motion to approve, Solomon. John Roberts said he would second that motion. All in favor of approval of 25, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
My mouth full of coffee.
That takes us through the consent items. Now, on to non-consent items, 33 through 34. Open public comment on those items, and I have a few, or 33 through 44, have a few speaker requests on these items. First one is Barbara. And if, while you're walking up there, if you would introduce yourself to the city council, and all the speakers tonight will have three minutes to address the council on this item. You can watch these lights over here to see how you're doing. They're just like traffic lights. Okay?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Barbara Parr. I own Mount Rushmore Birds, a specialty store selling food and accessories for companion birds. We also work under a nonprofit called Birds and Blooms, where we do the annual Birds and Blooms educational event. I fail to understand how additional licensing will improve the welfare of pets in Rapid City. Please consider coordinating these changes with zoning law changes that will allow pet-related businesses to successfully operate in Rapid City. As a small business owner, I encourage you to give this more thought. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up is Shalan Tim.
Hey, I'm Shalan Tim. I'm the owner of Full Stress Pet Salon. And basically, we just want, sorry.
You can bend that down if you like.
I'm a shorty. Basically, we just want some guidelines for what's, we're going to be inspected on. We don't have anything. We don't have any tangible documents saying we passed these inspections. We don't have anything that says what we're supposed to be doing, how we're supposed to be doing it, and then somebody's going to come in and inspect us. The other thing I'd kind of like to know is where the fees are going. The Humane Society is behind it, but are the fees going to them? Are the fees going to the city? And that's about it.
Okay, thank you. I believe you get the answers to those tonight. Next, Chad Tomjack.
Hello, thank you very much. Councilmembers, Mayor Allender, thank you very much for hearing us today on this issue. I'm also talking about the pet proposal that they have on the agenda tonight, item 38, I believe it is. I am the owner of The Spa, which is a new self-service grooming facility over on Jackson Boulevard. We do also offer grooming services and things of those natures as well. One of my primary concerns when I was seeing this new redefining of these terms and things was, the licensing is definitely part of our concern. But I've got a couple of questions as to where this originated. What is a specific example of something that happened that caused a need for these new licensing requirements? And also, not only, not only what is an example of what actually happened that showed a need for this, but we're already being, there's already legislation, there's already laws in place that dictate how we run our business with, you know, when you talk about cruelty to animals, animal welfare, and things of this nature, there's already laws in place for this. It's a matter of enforcement. When you talk about licensing, you're talking about another level of government, another level of bureaucracy in which there's going to be criteria. We're not entirely clear what that criteria is at this point. We don't know what standards we're going to be held to. We don't really understand exactly, exactly how this is all going to come to fruition. When you ask people about this, they say that you're going, the licensing is going to basically have the criteria that you're following existing laws and ordinances. Well, if that's the case, then it's more of an enforcement issue than it is to adding an additional licensing level on something that already exists. And so I believe that it's complicating some issues that we really don't need government involvement in. I believe that we've already got the methods in place that are going to govern how these businesses are running. I know, I was actually contacted by the state's attorney's office by the author of this, and I completely agree that there may be need for some defining to get some things clarified within the documents. I understand that. I also understand that if you talk to people from the Humane Society, that this, there may be an issue that they're concerned about animal welfare. These are all legitimate concerns. What I don't understand is how this is going to simplify things for businesses. That's one of the arguments that you're going to hear. I don't understand how it simplifies anything. We already have the laws in place. We already have all these things in place that govern how we're going to conduct our business. I believe that the licensing is just at a level that's unneeded. And as far as the fees and the money involved, you're talking about $50 licenses for the pet industry. That is going to be a drop in the bucket for a budget like the city or the Humane Society. Okay? It'll help, but really, I don't even know that that would cover the cost of the administration that you would need in order to facilitate something like this. So I would ask that this be tabled until we can have some further discussion and just some additional education on the matter. I really feel that there just needs to be some clarification on how the small businesses are going to be affected by this type of decision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is James Johnson.
I'm James Johnson. I'm the husband of an owner of Classic K9 here in town. Pretty much everything's been stated already except a couple of things. Back to the guidelines, I mean, where was the criteria for this initial $50 license? And now that we're hearing that there isn't any kind of format in place as far as, you know, these additional up to $50 to $250 for whether it be kenneling, whether it be grooming, in addition to four more additional animals? And I mean, most of these small businesses need to have multiple animals, you know, to create and to, you know, just keep the business running. But I guess the biggest question that most of these, most of these small businesses have is, is, you know, where's the, where's the money going? But mostly, where, who's establishing that criteria for these licenses? When you, you know, my wife has paid for the last two years and never got a piece of paper stating it. So if somebody was to come into the business and say, you know, you're going to be fine if you don't, haven't paid your license, there is no paperwork to show other than a check from the bank. So we're just wondering, you know, where's the money going? Who's proving that it's being paid? And then on top of it, you know, we understand that it's only the small businesses, that Petco, PetSmart, some of the larger corporations have nothing to do with this. So we're wondering why that's, you know, why that, you know, is the way it is. Actually, everybody else pretty much stated everything else, so I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. And that'll bring a close to the public comment portion of this agenda, and we'll move on to ordinances, starting with item 33. Second reading of Ordinance 6497, an ordinance clarifying the status and legality of medical cannabis establishments and city limits prior to the state's issuance of rules governing such establishments by amending titles 5 and 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code.
Second.
Motion approved by Armstrong, second by Lehman. Drew, second by Drew. And we'll go to Pat Jones.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Last time when this came up, I was the lone no vote because I wanted more information, wanted to know what we were doing, why we were doing it, et cetera. And we had a very, very good meeting a week or two ago where we discussed, I guess it was last Friday or the Friday before, two Fridays ago, thank you, and terrific discussion. We realized that we probably know less than we thought we did when we started discussing it, but we were on the right track in trying to do this the right way. So I appreciate very much the discussion that took place, the fact that the meeting took place at all, and everyone that was there, thank you. So now that I am comfortable, to quote Councilman Nordstrom, he likes to be comfortable, so me too, and I definitely support this now that those questions have been addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor for approval of item 33. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 34. Second reading of Ordinance 6380, an ordinance amending Chapter 15.04 of the Rapid City Municipal Code regarding buildings and construction, administrative procedures, amending Chapter 15.08 regarding moving of buildings, and repealing Chapter 5.44 regarding house-moving businesses.
Move to approve.
Motion approved by Drew, second by Lehman. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 35. Second reading of Ordinance 6488, an ordinance to adopt the 2020 edition of the National Electrical Code and to amend local provisions by amending Chapter 15.16 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Motion approved by Jones. Second by Nordstrom. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 36. Second reading of Ordinance 6382, an ordinance amending sections of the Rapid City Municipal Code relating, pertaining to the International Property Maintenance Code. Motion to approve, Nordstrom. Second, Stroman. All those in favor of approval, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. favor of approval, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 37, second reading of ordinance 6482, an ordinance to amend and clarify provisions concerning trenching contractors' licenses by amending chapter 13.24 of the Rapid City Municipal Code.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve by Drew, and was that a second by Jones? Okay. Motion and a second for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 38, first reading of ordinance 6456, an ordinance to amend and adopt provisions of the Rapid City Municipal Code relating to animals in Title Six. We'll go to Pat Jones.
Thank you very much, Mayor. One of the committees I serve on is the Humane Society, the Black Hills Committee, and at our most recent meeting, we discussed that these changes were coming and weren't too sure why things were going on, um, understood some parts of it, some not. Last council meeting, I asked questions as to why these were going on and left unfulfilled with my answers. Uh, I would like the representative from the city's attorney's office, Kelsey Wright? Okay, thank you. Could you, huh?
Kinsley.
Kinsley, thank you. Thank you, Kinsley. Mayor, if we may, um, I don't disagree with anything that these folks said. I'm, I'm not, I'm still not sure why these are taking place. And before you start with that explanation, I would like to ask, were any local pet store owners consulted or asked for input during this process?
Oh, um, Kinsley, girl, from the city attorney's office. Early on in the process, when I started looking at Title Six and some potential changes, yes, we, um, I had some contact with some pet store owners, um, this was early on in the progress, about some issues, some conflicts that had already come to light with the, you know, some of the issues with Title Six and Title 17, and what people were doing, and the legality of what they were doing. So in the beginning, the conversation started actually with some pet store owners, um, and that was probably a couple of, couple of years ago. And this, this whole, um, ordinance is actually designed to help some of the, uh, and it's not just pet stores. It's right now, kennels and the broad definition of kennels in Title Six includes pet stores.
But I, I asked this question last week, and I didn't feel like it was answered to my satisfaction. Have things taken place locally that have caused the need to make these changes? I know you said there's been some court cases and that kinda thing here and there, but this is a lot of change all at one time here for us.
Um, let me, let me address that question with, uh, a hypothetical for you. So if you look at the definition of a kennel, it's extremely broad. It's any pet store or any lotter premises or portion thereof where four or more dogs, cats, rabbits, or other household domesticated animals six months of age or older are maintained, boarded, bred, or cared for in return for any compensation or are kept for the purpose of sale. That's an extremely broad definition. So if you have four, um, dogs that you're caring for and anywhere in the city, and you're doing it in return for compensation, you're considered a kennel, and you will be required to get a kennel license. That's the current ordinance. So pet, um, so right now, Petco, you know, members that came up and spoke, or people that came up and spoke, they stated that they thought that Petco wasn't subject to a kennel license. That's incorrect. They are actually. They have to get a kennel license. This is a license that's been required for, for a decent amount of time. So that is not changing, actually. So the need for this is actually to make things more friendly for these businesses and to, in the future, also deal with some of the zoning issues that are created by having such a broad definition of kennel that's in Title Six, and for the future, the, the definition that is also very similar to this one that's in Title 17. So this is actually supposed to be a business-friendly change to the ordinances.
And could we have Jerry Steinle, the Humane Society Director, come up and comment on this, Mayor?
Yes, if he would like to.
Thank you, Kinsley.
Yeah, thanks, Pat. For the Humane Society, we do support these ordinances. And the Humane Society, our only goal is to take care of animals. That's what we do. We're the voice for the animals. We ensure their safety, we ensure their care, and these ordinances are just another tool for us to do that. They ensure us, uh, there, it's a minimal cost, it's, the inspection is minimal, we'll have our ASD go in and do it. So for us, it's just, it's one more way to help the animals and to take care of the community growth and the animals, and that's what we do. So we do support it. Kinsley's got the law in, I've got the animal in, and it's, I think it's a good deal.
So, thank you, Jerry. So if someone applies for a license, uh, one of the people who got a state, stated that they don't get any kind of a license or certificate to put in their business? Is that correct?
No, we provide a certificate for the business, the current ones.
For the last three years.
Never received one. Well, for the last three years, apparently. But we do have a license. If they've been missed, they've been overlooked. Um, we didn't do any last year, so.
Well, there's like 22 businesses that have never received one, so.
Well, I'm not gonna argue it at the podium here. Do you have another question for me?
Who, who issues the licenses?
The Humane Society would do it. Animal Services Enforcement.
And so then would the Humane Society be the one that should provide the certificate, then, to the business owner?
Yes.
Okay. So if that's, if that's an area that hasn't happened, obviously, we need to address that.
Yes.
And fix that.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, I went overtime, sorry. Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Kinsley. Jerry, thank you.
Darla Drew.
Again, there we go. Uh, Kinsley, could you stay up here for just a second? Um, so besides the Humane Society, we don't have any, um, group of kennel owners or people that meet on a regular basis, that you have no leadership. It's just, uh, you just operate your businesses and hope, that's it? Okay. All right, let's see here. So we have to have a kennel license, is that correct?
Yes.
Um, is that ever inspected, then, after it's given?
It's usually inspected, the business is inspected before the license would be given.
Never again?
It would be every year.
And is that done, Jerry?
Done every year, yeah.
You inspect the kennels every year?
If we did, um...
I mean, if we're gonna have a thing, we better have an inspection.
They've been, they, it hasn't been done very consistently, but it is a thing we need to be doing. We've had a lot of turnover in that department, and, uh, but we're getting back on track.
Okay. And all providers are licensed? All providers of kennels are licensed? Right? Okay.
Don't know which, what are you asking?
Yeah, I'm asking if all the providers of the kennels, the people that provide this service, are licensed.
I can answer.
Okay.
Councilwoman Drew, um, to Mayor, um, so in order to answer this question, you can look back on the history from the Humane Society. I know that in 2019, I saw some paperwork from Animal Control where they were going through the licensing process. There has been some turnover from the Humane Society, and there were some, there were some issues with zoning back then in 2019. This was before COVID hit, and so it was right around the time when COVID hit. And so, um, I think that, um, there were a decent amount of, um, kennel, well, kennels under the current ordinance, that definition. So pet stores, uh, actual...
I don't have a lot of time, and I've got a lot of questions, so can, are they...
Okay, so, so 2019, some of them, I believe, were licensed. Before that, I didn't track all the history, but part of the problem is that we, we needed to go forward and fix the ordinance so that it represented.
Mm-hmm. How about the groomers, um, that are in some of these places? Are they accredited? Is there any accreditation?
I...
You could just groom, you just set up a shop and go for it?
Yes.
Okay. Um, let's see here. Does the Board of Health ever look at the kenneling in these inspections?
Um, in terms of Board of Health, we don't have that for the city. In terms of the state, I don't know of any state regulations for groomers.
Well, I guess here's what I'm getting at. When I tried to bring chickens forward, they had to be inspected and licensed and looked at every year, and people were gonna come out and make sure there weren't more than six. And this was, Jerry, really did not want this to happen. But dogs and cats, they can just do whatever, and they can have kennels, and they could just have, hang out. And we don't have anybody inspecting them, really, from what I can tell. And so, um, I'm just wondering where any equity is here for a bill like I wanted, or an ordinance like I wanted to make, because who would inspect them anyway? You know? So I would like to bring that back, and I would like to have some kind of a, um, inspection in place. I'm sorry, all you guys, I think that it's gonna come, that you will have to have some type of license, and, and some, no, no, sorry, um, this is just, we can talk later. But, you know, uh, I think we should be able to look in on these dog shelters and the places where these people are, are kenneling dogs and not under any particular, uh, uh, form of oversight. I, I, and I really like what you've done to the most part of the, uh, you've really went through there with a fine-tooth comb and cleaned up a lot of that language. So thank you very much, Kinsley. But we really need to figure out what we're gonna do about the, the boarding places here. I just don't feel safe with them.
Okay, John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to make a motion to postpone this for 30 days to give these business owners an opportunity to talk to Kinsley and bring up, and then I'd like to hold the floor.
Okay, motion to postpone by Roberts for 30 days, and then second by Lance Lehman. Go ahead.
Thank you. And for full disclosure, I did meet with this group of people on Saturday, so I got an earful. Uh, but I did also take a lot better look at this ordinance. And, you know, I think there's things that need to be changed, and I, I think that there's things that can make it better. Um, one thing that bothers me, and this has bothered me for many, many years, and we've seen this come in front of this council before, when we push through ordinances and we don't get everybody, especially the stakeholders, that have a voice in it, then we end up with issues like this. Um, and, you know, there are people in here that, that don't have to apply, or, you know, don't have to have a license. I mean, licensed veterinarians don't have to have any of these licenses. Can you explain to me why that is?
I think the idea in this ordinance, um, that this code section, the one that gives an exception for veterinarians, has been there for a while. I'm guessing that the reason is because they all have their own certification process with the state. So the idea is that with their certification process, they're subject to their own standards, and we would rely upon the state to do that.
And I just kinda have an issue with that, especially in private business, small business. When we're putting a fee on somebody, but we're not putting a fee on somebody else that's doing the exact same thing, I just kinda have a little issue with that personally. Um, another one is, you know, the pets, pet store is pretty broad. You were talking about broad. So I'm just curious, you know, like Walmart, do they have to pay the pet store?
They've had to get licenses in the past. That is my understanding.
Really?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I'm just curious, and I would actually like to see that, because I know that they can be kinda hard to get, to pay licensing fees. Um, but I do wanna see the people have an opportunity to speak to you, you know, and anybody else that was involved in this, and hopefully come to some kind of resolution, at least get their, the, or the questions that they have answered. So that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Okay, and to clarify, then, the, uh, motion is to postpone for 30 days, or, we're gonna say July 19th city council meeting. That's Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I can support the motion. Um, uh, because the, uh, bringing in all the stakeholders in this conversation would be helpful and beneficial to both sides. Um, Kinsley, you explained, uh, and I should say, not Kinsley, Ms. Groot, thank you very much for taking the time to explain all the issues that you've dealt with, especially over the court process. And I, I'm more comfortable with seeing this done in a, in a, in a larger fashion rather than piecemeal. Every, every few months, we bring up a piece that needs to be brought in and make an amendment to the ordinance. So, um, this will give you an opportunity to have more conversation with the stakeholders. And Mr. Steinle, I also give you the, um, uh, the opportunity to address the things that Alderman Jones had brought up before, um, in our, early on in our conversations, to give the opportunity for the Humane Society to address some of the concerns that, uh, that have been brought up tonight. And I saw you, both of you, taking copious notes on the, uh, responses that we were getting on. Also, are you aware of the, all the emails that we've gotten on this issue as well?
No.
Have you seen those? Have not? I'll be glad to forward those emails to you. Go ahead.
Appreciate it.
Ms. Kinsley.
If, if I could respond to that. Um, I, I actually saw a couple of emails, and I already made phone calls. I was on vacation Thursday and Friday, and still had to deal with this. But, um, did make phone calls this morning to the, a couple of people that had sent emails to try to clarify things with them, and to give them the history of all the people that we've already tried to get input from on all of this, and the fact that this is really trying to push getting people legal as opposed to, um, because obviously the definition of kennel currently is very broad, and people don't have their licenses right now. So...
And I get that, and I, I appreciate the information you shared with me about the issues that you've gone in front of the, the, what is it, Circuit Court, that you've had to, uh, deal with those issues and explain to the judge why, or, so this is an improvement? Am I correct?
Yes. Part of this is, this 18-page document includes changes because of court cases in front of magistrate judges, and one was a Circuit Court judge, but it was a magistrate case.
It was magistrate, okay. Um, I just remembered the Circuit Court one. It's okay. Um, so that's why I, I, I'm supporting of the motion to, uh, help you explain this to, to the folks that are concerned about these issues, and I'll be glad to forward the emails that, if you haven't seen them.
Thank you. And just for the record, there have been, this ordinance had been posted on the Humane Society's website for...
30 days.
30 days already.
Yes, it has. Yep. And I appreciate that part of it as well. It's another level of communication. I know there can be always improvements in communication, so, um, the biggest thing is, is now we have the opportunity to get the people that are concerned about this and bring them in as additional stakeholders. So, um, another reason why you, give you a chance to explain more thoroughly in a, in a less formal process to, uh, why we need this. Thank you.
Thanks.
I yield, Mayor.
Okay, motion on the floor is to postpone, and we'll go to Ron Weifenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hey, and full disclosure, the Alderman Roberts over there has a cat house, by the way. They probably should, uh, he should disclose to you guys and get his license for that. Yeah, like five of them, I think. Yeah.
He's got the red shirt for it.
Oh, I appreciate all you folks showing up tonight, because I honestly, I had one understanding of something, and obviously, you guys have another understanding. But I think if someone can answer my question, Mr. Mayor, about, in the city of, I sat up here on these discussions before, and the, uh, one thing that we must understand is that you pet groomers and you kennel people and the Humane Society are really, I mean, and pet owners, you know, it's a, it's a pretty specific group of people. And you have to understand, we're all working together, because the Humane Society gets some donations from the city, they get some donations from the county, but a lot of their, uh, fundraising is done locally. Sometimes they get beat out by these guys that can afford these fancy national television commercials. So I would remind you guys that these people are trying to do a service for you, and somehow, we got convoluted on here. We can fix this. I think we're gonna give it 30 days to, to, to have your voices heard, but I'm glad you showed up tonight, so you can, we can get those voices heard, we can, uh, resolve those issues. But, uh, it also, and it used to be, and I, Mr. Mayor, I'd ask you, uh, everybody that owns a pet was supposed to have a license for their pet. Is that still in effect?
That's correct.
How many, how many licensed pets are there in Rapid City, South Dakota?
Well, I don't know how many there are, but I can get the number for it, but that's not all.
I guarantee it's probably about a hundredth of them. So my point is, get out there and pay your l-... So my point is get out there and pay your licenses. If you have five cats, make sure you get them all registered, Mr. Roberts. The postponement will allow us some time to, I'm really concerned that you guys think everybody's pitted against each other and that's not the case. I have a dog, I get him groomed and the importance of the groomers, but also you see how the Humane Society works and through COVID, a lot of pets got adopted and I'm concerned about what's going to happen in the future when people get tired of these dogs and they realize their responsibility and accountability that comes along with having a dog or a cat. So support your local Humane Society. We can work through this, guys. Nobody's out to get you, nobody wants to put you out of business and you guys just want to have an understanding. So with that being said, I think we can get there fairly easy. So just understand, we're not against you. The Humane Society fellow is not against you. He's got a really, really tough job. You know, you got to put down a pet or somebody's dog or their cat, that's a tough deal. They try to save as many as they possibly can. You guys keep them clean. You know the people that really love their animals. And sometimes the Humane Society sees the ugly side. They see the side where people are not accountable, not responsible. But in this case, I think there's some convoluted messaging. We can work through it. We're not here to put any extra fees on you guys, trying to make it easier for you. If you have four or five cats and you don't really want to be a kennel, so we're trying to address some of those issues. So we'll get 30 days and we'll be back. And if you guys have concerns, we're all on the website. Find your councilman, get ahold of the fellow at the Humane Society and we'll get it worked out. Thanks for coming.
Jason Solomon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I go along with the motion, can I ask a question to Ms. Groot or Ms. Fisher regarding zoning?
Yes, you may.
We'll start with Ms. Groot and then maybe, I just want to make sure Ms. Fisher, are experts ready? One of the emails I received, I think we all received today from a constituent, is a concern that there were upcoming zoning changes that would be made and her recommendation was to wait until we had those zoning adjustments in place. Do you have any idea what those are, what kind of timeline we would be looking at?
Yes.
Okay, so we actually have a draft ordinance together for that and it, I'm going to turn the floor over to Ms. Fisher because she can talk more about when she believes that might come forth, but that one's already been drafted in terms of being able to put some of these specific business in certain districts.
And the recommendation would be if we made any changes, that it be in conjunction with any zoning changes and that we do it at the same time. So just so you know, for context, Ms. Fisher.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. So this actually all came about because we had places in the ordinance where you could do pet grooming, which was just a service allowed in any general commercial. You could do a pet store, again, allowed in many of our retail zoning districts, but when it came to a kennel where you're actually lodging dogs or cats or whatever the animal might be overnight, that's only allowed in light industrial and general ag and only with a conditional use permit. So many people were innocently either grooming or perhaps even veterinary clinics that were providing for kenneling services because the licensing they got was a kennel license. So we're looking at it from a land use, they're getting a license and they're believing that they've got it covered. That's how this all got started. So we're trying to break down the licensing so that everything's clear. In doing so, we then want to marry up the zoning ordinance so it matches that, so the terminology is there, so that the requirement for when a conditional use is required and when it's not is consistent. Please bear with me, we are extremely short-staffed in community development right now. We've got some high priority ordinance amendments that we need to get through on a timely manner. It will probably be closer to this fall or even the end of the year before we would bring this one forward.
Okay. And Ms. Kinsley, then, in response to that, would it, would it make sense just to wait until we had that, those zoning adjustments and do it all in the same meeting?
So.
And allow time for input in the meantime?
Mr. Mayor, to answer that question, they, I actually, we had a draft that was both of them together originally. So that was the thought, I don't know, maybe a year and a half or a year ago, that we could put those together, that could all be one big ordinance. But things didn't seem to be ready for Title 17 yet, so we were already going to do a rewrite of Title VI. So it seemed appropriate because Title 17 normally goes through the Planning Commission. So it seemed appropriate for them to potentially be split up into a Title VI rewrite and then a Title 17 rewrite that specifically dealt with the zoning side of things. So they could be joined back together, but right now, we're trying to do a Title VI rewrite, 18 pages of it, and we could potentially strike out the stuff that had to do with pet, that change in licensing and just deal with the other sections. But that's why I went forward with just the Title VI changes so that we could at least get the licensing part of it clear and then as soon as community development was ready to go back and deal with the Title 17 changes, they could put that forward to go through Planning Commission and then come up to council. So it's gone back and forth. That's why this one has been a work in progress and this is also why it gets a little more complicated when you have one that's in Title VI and one that's in Title 17.
And it's challenging, I know, but I think the patchwork is also a challenge for us. It would seem to me that would make sense that we try to coordinate those and sync those up as much as we could so that nobody's out of compliance unnecessarily between whenever this would come forward and whenever we would pass any zoning changes if that was to happen.
They're already out of compliance, so that's part of the problem right now. We're just trying to fix it as soon as possible. And that's why there's a little bit of haste here because it would be nice to get it changed as soon as possible.
Ms. Fisher.
Vicky Fisher.
Actually, changing the licensing is required in order for us to do our zoning changes as well. So the order of doing this first is the right order. I think the fact that you've continued this item for a month to allow Kinsley to sit and visit with the stakeholders, just to thoroughly listen and to explain the impact of these changes, once I think that everyone comes on board with how that's going to impact them, you folks can then take action on this. I will try to move up our zoning to Chapter 17 as quick as I can, but you will see that having this taken care of will make changes to that seem very simplified. It's going to be required that the licensing get changed first anyway.
Okay. So allowing time for the communication and education and input and then we can bring it back and if there's any adjustments between now and then, we could have that? Okay, thank you.
Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. One, there's no new fees?
So the fees essentially remain the same. So what was going to be just, or what is right now, one kennel license is $50. That would change to have separate businesses, separate definitions for a pet store, a pet daycare, a pet grooming business and a kennel with a new definition. So the fee would be $50 for one of those licenses.
That's what they are right now, Mr. Mayor. They're $50, okay. So the other question is, those fees go to the Humane Society?
Currently, they do go to the Humane Society based upon the contract that the city has with the Humane Society.
Okay, now you said currently. So is there, there not a plan to change that, is there?
There's not a plan to change that.
Okay. So just rest assured that your fees are going to a good cause no matter what either way, but we don't want any new fees and the fees are going to go to the Humane Society, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, motion on the floor is to postpone until the July 19th city council meeting. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 39, first reading of ordinance 6498 regarding supplemental appropriation number four for 2021. Motion to approve, Drew, second by Strowman. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Community development items, number 40, a request by Baseline Surveying for TNA Properties LLC for a preliminary subdivision plan for proposed lot 1A and lot 1B of Lot C of Golden Eagle subdivision, generally described as being located at 2450 Seeger Drive, and the recommendation is to approve with stipulations. Okay, Nordstrom makes the motion to approve stipulations, second by Strowman. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 41, a request by Long Branch Civil Engineering for ZCO Incorporated for a preliminary subdivision plan for Lot 39 through Lot 46 of Block 10, Lot 22, Lot 31 of Block 11, Lot 2 through Lot 15 of Block 12, Lot 5 through 9 of Block 14, Lot 5 and Lot 10 through 12 of Block 15, Lot 12 through 37 of Block 16, Lot 1 through 9 of Block 17, and Lot 1 through 15 of Block 18 of Elks Country Estates, generally described as being located southeast of the intersection of Augusta Drive and Willow Bend Road. And again, the recommendation is to approve with stipulations. Motion by Lehman.
Second.
Second by Strowman. All in favor of approval with stipulation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 42, a request by Fisk Land Surveying and Consulting Engineers for Saks Development LLC for a preliminary subdivision plan for proposed 13A and 13B of Chalkstone subdivision, generally described as being located at 5218 Chalkstone Court, and recommendation is to approve with stipulations. Okay, Solomon approves with stipulations and Roberts seconds. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 43, a request by Fisk Land Surveying and Consulting for Terrence and Mardana Holm Living Trust for a preliminary subdivision plan for proposed lots 1 and 2 of Holm subdivision, generally described as being located at 4601 225th Street. And again, the recommendation is to approve with stipulations. Okay, motion by Drew to approve with stipulation, second by Jones. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now down to appeals, item 44, appeal of abatement late fee. Motion to deny by Drew and a second by Nordstrom. And we'll go to John. Go ahead. Motion on the floor is to deny the appeal of the abatement. We'll go back to John Roberts.
Thank you very much. You know, I guess I don't know, I didn't get into the queue quick enough because I would have made the motion exactly opposite of this because, again, I'm just going to reiterate that when you only have 10 days from the time it's sent out to send that check or you get a $10 or a $100 late fee, especially during COVID, you know, and everything that's happening with the mail, that is too short of a time period in my opinion. And I can probably talk until I'm blue in the face and it looks like Pauline has something to say, so.
Go ahead, please finish.
So, no, go ahead. You can and then.
I was just going to say, there's actually a 14-day time period between the time that you get, we send out the invoice and the time that payment has to be made. I will also say that if somebody calls between the time that that 14 days is up and that before it hits a council agenda and asks for an extension, I typically will grant that if it's reasonable. We've received no phone call about that during this time on this, on this individual. The reason why there's 14 days and honestly, that's been in play for a long time, I think the resolution that I found goes back to the early 90s or mid 90s, something like that, is to protect the city's interest should it go to the county and then it becomes delinquent. For a while there, we weren't showing that they weren't, they were delinquent and the property would be sold on tax certificate or on tax deed and we would lose our interest. And so the sooner that we can get it to the county then, because nine times out of 10, if it hits that $100 extra, they're not paying it anyway. And I know that's not always the case, but it is a very high chance of that happening once that $100 hits that bill. But we do give them the 14 days. If they call after that 14 days, when the fee should have been put on there, but before it comes to council, I work with them. I can't, they can also pay online. They have that option now as well, so just for a couple clarification points.
And I still think 14 days is too short. And I am going to bring it back and extend that to 30 days here real soon, so I just give you.
Just talk for 30 seconds and you got it extended from 10 days to 14. That was fast.
That's right. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Laura Armstrong.
Director Sumption, thank you for clarifying the 10 and 14-day difference, also granting extensions when people call because extenuating circumstances do occur. And you mentioned online. So if I was out of town and I called the finance office and I gave you a credit card number or debit card number, are you able to take that as well?
We don't take them over the phone currently. It's on my list of things to look into to find a way to be able to start doing that as well, but that's not something that we currently do.
I think that would be a great idea to explore and that way we can just offer yet another service.
Well, and we've had some of those requests through utility bills as well, so that's why I started wanting to look at that.
Great, I appreciate that. Thank you, I yield.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Sumption, I appreciate the clarification on the timeframes and for me, this is one of those issues that comes up every couple of years and it doesn't happen very frequently. And so am I correct in saying that it's pretty rare that these circumstances happen, that there's a late fee applied because of, go ahead, please, looks like.
Don't finish. I want to hear the whole question.
It's pretty rare and it doesn't happen very often. And the last one, I remember, an argument came up disagreeing with the timeframe as well. But it's like every couple of years we run across something like that or am I correct on saying that?
Yes, you are correct on saying that. And like I said, that's probably because the majority of them don't have the ability to pay with, at all, let alone if you give them 14 days, 30 days, it doesn't matter. It ends up going to the county and it gets put at Zalina on the property most of the time.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification. And then, so I'm in support of this denial because it just sounds like one of those things that it's a communication thing and then also it happens so rare, so making a major change to an ordinance that's been working for, what'd you say, 1990 timeframe, way back. So it's been working. It's been working. So if we have a couple of incidences over these last 20, 30 years, it's kind of a stretch for me to make a significant change like this. So I'm in support of the denial. Thank you for, Ms. Sumption, thank you very much for helping me out, getting through this. Thank you.
Greg Strowman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a quick question for the finance director, if I may.
Yes.
Pauline, it's in this letter that this appellant made dated May 10th, he said, "I had requested from the supervisor the waiver of the late fee because I did not receive notification, but the supervisor refused to waive the fee." Is that accurate?
That came after it had already been to council and the $100 had already been added on, from my recollection.
Okay, so the fee was, the late fee was, or the service fee was 80 and the city fee was 50 and then the late fee was 100, is that accurate?
Correct, because there's additional steps and processes and costs that we have to go through then after if it hasn't been paid.
Okay, thank you. I yield.
Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to waive the guy's $100 late fee and I'll tell you why. And I wish I had the card with me, but I had a code enforcement violation when I was remodeling the house, had some stuff out in the front yard or whatever. And so code enforcement sent me a card and they gave me seven days to fix it, right? With the card, by the time the seven days was up to fix it, I'd already been late and I addressed it at the time and it's just, $100 bucks is hard for the guy, didn't get the thing. The mail is crazy sometimes, especially during COVID or whenever it may have happened, I don't know. But sometimes you don't get those cards. But the card I got was actually postmarked shorter than the period of time that they had given me to pay the fee. And if I wouldn't have paid it on that day, I would have got a $100 late fee, same thing. So I don't think we, we. late fee, same thing. So I don't think we, we don't address these very often. I think when these people come forward, they're earnest in the fact that, you know, unless this guy's been a habitual offender, I mean-
Which he has.
Did we have documentation that shows he's habitual?
Yes, we have probably, I want to say four to five a year that we have with this gentleman.
This is Mr. Wyfembach's time. Does, do you want to let, do you want to let this question be answered?
Go ahead, yeah.
Okay, Vicky Fisher.
So very quickly, as I shared at working session, when this notice was sent out, and by the time you heard it at working session, he had already received two more notices on this same property that the city had to abate, so this is actually three in a very short time period.
Okay, so he's-
And that's just-
During the time he got this one, then he got two more abatements, that'd be hard to, I guess that's hard to support, is waiving a hundred bucks if he can't mow his own yard or whatever the case is, so, thank you.
Okay, the motion here on the floor is to deny the appeal. All in favor of that emo, that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes with three noes. Evans, Roberts, Lehman, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, now down to public hearing items, forty-five through fifty-two. There are no speaker requests on these items, so consent, public hearing items are forty-five and forty-six. Motion to approve by Lehman.
Second.
Second by Strowman. All in favor of approving forty-five and forty-six, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And that brings us to the end of consent public hearing, and now to non-consent public hearing items, forty-seven through fifty-two. Item forty-seven, a request to approve Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash zero-five-two by KTM Design Solutions for six-oh-five Storage LLC for a comprehensive plan amendment to the major street plan for property generally described as being located at thirty-two seventy-six and thirty-three hundred Campbell Street. The recommendation is to continue to the September twentieth City Council meeting at the applicant's request. Pat Jones made that motion, and John Roberts made the second, to continue this to September twenty, twenty-twenty-one. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item forty-eight, second reading, Ordinance six-four-nine-two, and ordinance amending section seventeen-point-zero-six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by Michael Powell for rezoning request from General Commercial District to Medium Density Residential District for property generally described as being located at three-oh-six East Denver Street. Motion approved, Drew, second by Lehman. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item forty-nine, second reading, Ordinance six-four-nine-three, and ordinance amending section seventeen-point-zero-six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by KTM Design Solutions for BH Capital Four LLC for rezoning request from Light Industrial District to Medium Density Residential District for property generally described as being located east of North Valley Drive Terminus. Motion approved by Drew.
Second.
Second by Nordstrom. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item fifty, second reading, Ordinance six-four-nine-four, and ordinance amending section seventeen-point-zero-six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, request by Toey Design Group for Pink Cabin LLP for rezoning request from Office Commercial District to Medium Density Residential District for property generally described as being located west of Healing Way between Moon Meadows and Samus Trail.
Motion approved.
Approved by Jones, second by Roberts. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item fifty-one, second reading, Ordinance six-four-nine-five, and ordinance amending section seventeen-point-zero-six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by Long Branch Civil Engineering for Coldwell Banker Black Hills Legacy for rezoning request from General Agricultural District to Medium Density Residential District for property generally described as being located north of Katron Boulevard between Wellington Drive and Tartan Court. Motion approved, Nordstrom.
Second.
Second by Drew. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item fifty-two, second reading, Ordinance six-four-nine-six, and ordinance amending section seventeen-point-zero-six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by Long Branch Civil Engineering for Coldwell Banker Black Hills Legacy for rezoning request from General Agricultural District to Low Density Residential District Two for property generally described as located north of Katron Boulevard between Wellington Drive and Tartan Court. Motion to approve by Drew and a second by Nordstrom. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The bill list, for the bill list, we will go to Finance Director Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are no additions to the bill list, so the total is that which is attached at nine million, nine-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand, nine-hundred-and-three dollars and sixty cents.
Motion approved, Solomon.
Second.
Second, Jones. All in favor of approving the bill list, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to adjourn by Solomon, second by Lehman. Everyone say aye.
Aye.
Adjourn, thank you.